Today, June, Thursday, June twelfth meeting to order at six o'clock. Councilmember Sanchez, would you like to lead us in the pledge?
I'll join me in pledge. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America. In the Republic for which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with every proceeding of its strength.
Right, and if we could have a roll call, Linda, at your leisure.
Sure, now it's Member Hornick.
Here.
That's Member Sanchez.
Here.
Vice Mayor Lewis.
Here.
And Mayor Silva.
Here. And is there any reordering of the agenda tonight? No, this evening, Mr. Rarley. So we will go through. Um, public comment for non-agendized items, and so tonight. I believe it's Whitney is the last name, correct? Was that? Okay, we have first up will be Carla Whitney, just wanted to make sure. Oh, do you want to go second? Okay.
First of all, thank you for getting to speak, I guess as part of the. Beauty of our. Council here. Um, just want to say that I don't believe the new building that has been represented to fill in the spot of. Split P Anderson's residence really fits well with what we have today. Um, I like the beauty of the West. I like to look at the hills and I ride in the hills. And that building just kind of did not make me feel like it was a good thing. Um. More and more, I see the foothills covered and I drove home and took the Bulton on-ramp, rock ramp, I guess, from the freeway. And I looked and I saw those apartments that are new there, you know, that's great, we've got new homes for people. Um, but golly, I felt like I was downtown L.A. You know, I'm used to seeing more, more of our beautiful country. Well, I want to thank you again for listening to me and that's about all I have to say.
Thank you very much for coming in.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming, Carla.
And then next up, we'll have Mr. Tarman.
Good evening, Council. Uh, so good to be back after a knee surgery, I'm sure you guys all enjoyed. A Cersei from District One's. Raving preservationists. Anyway, I want to thank you, Council, for the speed signs on Casa de Maria, those are very helpful. And also finally acquiring a full-time psycho cop, I understand that's starting out July seventh.
July third, I think.
Well, that's even better.
July.
July seventh, he should be here full-time on the street.
Good.
Great. I was right.
You got me, thank you.
Just at only time.
Yeah.
Anyway, the reason, uh, main reason I'm here tonight is that recent polls show only thirteen percent approval. And eighty percent disapproving art deco. Thank you, Ms. Whitney. And the peace soup hundred twenty-five unit plus replacement plan. That was a poll I've never seen before, we actually have five thousand hits with a hundred sixty people participating, which is really unusual. Anyway. You all see my little sticker, I'm Miss Happy and Pee Wee, you're probably seeing him around. Uh. I get calls from all over the state for these quirky little guys. They are Bultons claim to fame for the past century. The locals are out in force to save them too. Folks recall past celebrations, their first workplace and the traveler's special, we can forget that for four dollars at seventy-five cents. Bilton has always enjoyed a sense of place, this is a quality not found in many places today. This key corner is the last place to preserve our identity. Our residents don't want a beige crowded condo. Conglomeration of the one-on-one. I propose, and you guys can hang on to your hats, it's a big thought. I propose that the city open up negotiations with the present owner to buy the full four acres. Preserve the rights to the iconic one-on-one billboards. Move City Hall to this key, key corner. Replicate the wonderful old building that is P soup Anderson's keep P soup, a lot of people think we want to keep that building. It'd be nice to preserve some of the things from it, but most people consider it. Uh, not possible to do. Consider making all of Avenue of the Flags a historical district with two-story limits on signs and structures. Natural materials of wood and stone would would be welcome. Our history is tied to the land. Let's make it a place to wa- to walk and bike. Rather than speed through. The key corner can be filled with all manner of visitor and resident delights. A gazebo for our musicians to entertain an old-fashioned ice cream and soda fountain. A traveler's center with video of the incredible history of the Bules half land grant. By the way, that land grant above Trump Canyon used to go all the way to El Capitan, can you imagine? The Danish farmers to the Electric Cafe, what a history, a bicycle rental, galleries of all sorts, eateries, brew and grape tasting rooms. And of course, lots of grass and sweet peas, which I think Happy would like. This is not pie in the sky. The developer may take some city property in partial trade. City residents may support a bond to acquire and improve. In closing, a lesson prior to nineteen twenty-five, Santa Barbara was a broken down, outback western town. An earthquake hit it, turned out to be a blessing. The town discovered itself with the world-renowned style you see today. Council, this potential loss of peace soup is our earthquake. You and only you can rekindle our sense of place. The grand Anderson's style built in City Plaza under Mayors. Proton, Happy and Pee Wee, thank you for listening.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, AJ.
Thanks, AJ.
All right. We will now move on to the consent calendar tonight, we have minutes of May twenty-second, twenty twenty-five, regular city council meeting. List of claims to be approved and ratified for payment to date for fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five. Approval of bond reduction release for Palm Community Development. Authorization to create new job classification adopt associated job description and salary schedule. And resolution number twenty-five dash sixteen, a resolution of the city council of the city of Bilton, California, making salary adjustments for certain regular full-time employees. Would anyone like to remove any of these items, and if if not, do we have a motion to approve?
I would motion to approve with recusing myself from the minutes of May twenty-second because I was at a work event, does that work? Okay.
Second.
Okay.
Okay, Vice Mayor Lewis.
Hi.
That's Member Hornick.
Hi.
That's Member Sanchez.
Hi.
Mayor Silva.
Hi. All right. Moving on, we'll go to our presentations tonight, and we have the proclamation recognizing June twenty twenty-five as LGBTQIA plus Pride Month. I know that we have a few people here in the audience to speak on and to receive that. I wanted to take a moment just to thank the council for allowing this space, and I think it's a bit timely since June twelfth is the anniversary from the Pulse nightclub shooting that killed forty-nine individuals. And so I think in these moments when we have these times to reflect on that and recognize that. It's really pertinent for us to remember that there's a lot of violence that's being dealt with in these communities, and so I really appreciate the council taking the time to recognize this, so. Whereas individuals of the LGBTQIA plus community, including those who are lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer, intersex, asexual allies, and all diverse sexual and gender identities. Encompass people of all faiths and ethnicities, national origins, socio-economic statuses, disability statuses, education levels, and political beliefs. And whereas LGBTQIA plus individuals have made and continue to make vital contributions to our community. Including in the fields of education, law, health, business, science, research, economic development, government and military service. And whereas LGBTQIA plus individuals in the United States face disparities in employment, healthcare, education, housing, and many other areas central to the pursuit of happiness. And whereas each year, June marks the anniversary of the Stonewell Rebellion, which gave birth to the modern LGBTQIA plus civil rights movement. Leading to the national designation of June as Pride Month in two thousand nine. And whereas LGBTQIA plus individuals in the United States have fought for equal treatment, dignity and respect, and remain determined to pursue full equality. Respect and inclusion for all individuals regardless of sexual orientation, gender identity, or gender expression. And whereas LGBTQIA plus individuals continue to celebrate their identities, love and contributions and various expressions of pride. Now therefore be resolved that the city council of the city of Bilton, California, does hereby proclaim June twenty twenty-five as LGBTQIA plus month, Pride Month. In the city of Bilton and encourages all to join in celebration and appreciation appreciation of the LGBTQIA plus community. And I think we have someone here tonight from our S Y B Pride to receive that, if we can ask them to come up, or we have a few people maybe, and then we have a few speakers as well. Thanks for coming tonight.
Hello, all, my name is Adriana Reyes, and I'm the founding board member for S Y B Pride, so thank you for having us here. A little bit of my story as well, I'm born and raised here in Bilton, so I understand the whole happy. Um, I have always said that my blood is green because half of my family has worked there, including myself, all growing up. I lived across the street at an old duplex. Um, uh, the Perez family was to the left and we were to the right and grew up there, my grandfather says. Till he died, that he cut Governor Ronald Reagan's hair. While he came to visit Mr. Anderson, so we do have a lot of history in Bilton, so. I'd also like to recognize the fact that just driving down Avenue of the Flags and Highway two forty-six has been. So heartwarming for me because seeing the pride flags up is is all worth it to me, so. Growing up and having to ride my bike to my grandparents' house and what we called Bejuanita just down the street. Um, it was just everything, so I'd like to thank you all for having us today, and I'd like to introduce our new board member, um, our young board member, Kiara.
Hello, um, my name is Kiara, I did not bring my pin. Um, but this is a little blurb from our president, um, just wanting to thank you all. Uh, so on behalf of San Inez Valley Pride, we would like to thank the city council for cultivating a community of care and for leading with integrity, respect and inclusion. Together, we can fulfill our mission of creating a safe, supportive and empowering home for the LGBTQ plus community in the San Inez Valley. Mayor Silva touched on this, but as we celebrate Pride, Pride Month and head into the weekend with our landmark annual Pride Parade and Festival in Solvang. We also want to acknowledge and remember the forty-nine victims and countless survivors of the mass shooting in Pulse, a gay nightclub in Orlando, Florida. That occurred today nine years ago. Our hearts are with all of those who were and continue to be impacted by this devastating event. This year's pride is on June fourteenth in solving and the theme is lead with love. Now more than ever, it feels important to lead with love. And no, I'm not talking about passive woo-woo type of love, but instead a loud and brave kind of love that requires action. It will ask us to stand up for all members of our community, especially our trans and immigrant neighbors. It will demand that we act with kindness in the face of adversity and that we garner strength and hope through community. It will empower us to create safe spaces throughout the valley, in particular for our youth. Such as our new youth connect initiative that is aimed to support and uplift the LGBTQ plus youth in the valley. Together, we can lead with love and help make this valley a kinder and more loving home for all. Thank you.
Very much, reject to come up to, we can take our photo together, yes.
It's awesome. Councilmember Sanders, this way, there we go, better, whoops, better, better, better. All right.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. I didn't get the blurb, I just was reading, I guess.
Yeah, usually we get that.
And then we have two speakers for us that are joining as well for the Pride proclamation, first up, we, is Bianco?
I don't.
Okay, we have. We have Jules Bianco.
Good evening, council members. Um, my name is Jules Bianco and I am a community organizer at Planned Parenthood, California Central Coast. Um, one of our core values at Planned Parenthood is showing up, especially for our patients. But we also want to show up for elected officials when they are doing the right thing. We want to show up in support of the Pride, uh, proclamation to support and uplift LGBTQIA plus students and community members. Planned Parenthood recognizes your work and your inclusivity in Bilton, and so do our hundreds of Santa Barbara County supporters. We believe everyone should have the freedom to live an authentic life and we honor and celebrate the diversity, strength, humanity and resiliency of the LGBTQ plus communities. We celebrate Pride Month this June by reaffirming our commitment to providing care for LGBTQ plus communities as well. The fight for LGBTQ plus rights and humanity is inseparable from our mission. LGBT people are essential to the Planned Parenthood California Central Coast community, their patients, staff and supporters. LGBTQ plus communities are part of the reason we fight to provide healthcare, information and education, as well as reproductive freedom on the central coast. We're proud to provide care and education to LGBT people in our communities and your community. We know how important it is for people of all sexual orientations and gender identities to feel safe, supported and affirmed. For many of our patients, we are their entry into the healthcare system and only source of sexual and reproductive healthcare in Santa Barbara County. We're also one of the largest providers in Santa Barbara County for gender-affirming healthcare for trans people. With that said, we just wanted to say thank you so much for seeing our patients and standing with them with this proclamation. And we are so glad to have allies like you in this, uh, fight for true justice and equality for all, thank you.
And then we have Speaker Carla Mead.
Uh, good evening, everyone, Mayor and council members, I'm Carla Mead, citizen of Bilton. I just want to sincerely thank all of you for the Pride proclamation, for the beautiful banners that are lining the Avenue of Flags. Each time I drive down the street and so the see those colors waving the breeze, I feel not only proud to live in Bilton. But also incredibly grateful to be part of a community that chooses love, inclusion, invisibility over silence and fear. These banners aren't just decorative, they send a powerful message to the LGBT. LGBTQ plus residents, visitors, families, and especially our young people. That they are seen, valued, and most importantly, welcome here. In a time when so many communities are moving backwards or avoiding hard conversations, Bilton has shown courage and compassion. Inclusion should not be controversial, controversial, it should be foundational. And your actions reflect a city that understands that. A city where people don't have to hide who they are, a city that makes room for everyone at the table, it's the kind of community I'm proud to call home. Thank you for being leaders who understand that visibility matters, that representation matters, and that kindness, acceptance and respect are not partisan. They are human, they're human rights. I know that proclamations and banners don't fix everything, but they're a step forward. Bilton has been a leader in making pride visible, and I certainly hope that continues to be the case in the in the very far future. Thank you for helping make Bilton not just a beautiful place to live, but a better one.
Thank you for coming. Right, those are our public speakers, and I'm also aware enough to know that that is, we will move into. Public hearings about staff issues at this point or staff conversations, so I'm going to pause if anyone would like to vacate the premises at this point. I know that there's events taking place throughout Pride this month, so thank you for making the trip over here. Uh, they're doing a wine tasting over in Solvang, I think, or I don't know, Los Salibos, I can't remember. Thank you all for coming, Julie. Thank you for coming. Yeah, we kind of. Now we get to go on to. Now we get to go on to a public hearing item.
I hit my knee so hard, like embarrassing. And I just. No, I hit the car door yesterday, like the right angle. And every time I freaking touch this, I'm like, trying not to make a face, like, not who's talking, it's that I am hitting the on the roof and it hurts.
On that note, I guess we'll resume on to item number seven now. We will be moving on to. Oh, no, not yet, almost. We'll be moving on to item number seven. So I just wanted to. Oh, I get you. Pee soup in the morning, pee soup in the evening, pee soup at supper time. When pee soup's on the table, you can eat pee soup anytime. Public hearing number seven is Resolution Number twenty-five dash thirteen, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Beelton, California, regarding the commitments and publishing the report required by Central Coast Water Authority Resolution Numbers ninety-two dash O two and ninety-two dash one one. And our staff contact will be Public Works Director Rose Hess.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, member City Council. This is an annual housekeeping item. Since the city started receiving state water, we're required to review our water supplies and provide an annual report that shows what our sources are and how much water we've used, what we anticipate to use in the future. State Waters was purchased to supplement our existing water supply. It's not meant to be the primary source or the only source for the city. It is, as you are aware, we don't always get a hundred percent of our allocations. It depends on the water year and the availability of water that's diverted down south to us from the north. So with that, we have provided Exhibit Eight, the Water Supply Report for twenty twenty-five, which gives a recount of the water year of twenty twenty-four. And that's provided as part of Resolution twenty-five dash thirteen. I don't have any other specific questions. Generally, it's just an accounting of all the different water facilities that we have. Our water use has been pretty steady, and actually our supply with our groundwater has been relatively steady as well. We, one important part of the groundwater system that we've been partaking in is the GSA, the Groundwater Sustainability. And that group has a much closer responsibility and oversight over the groundwater supplies throughout, well, throughout the state and each area has their own little group. And ours, we have a central management area for the San Inez Valley groundwater basin. And they are keeping track of that as well. So a lot of those activities are identified in the annual report. So with that, staff's recommending that council adopt Resolution twenty-five dash thirteen, and I'm available to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Any questions for staff at this time? All right. Seeing none, is there any public comment at this time?
No, sir.
All right. We'll bring it back for discussion and entertain a possible motion.
I move to approve Resolution Number twenty-five thirteen, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Beelton regarding the commitments and publishing the report required by Central Coast Water Authority Resolution Numbers ninety-two dash O two and ninety-two dash one one.
A second.
Thank you very much.
Okay, Vice Mayor Lewis.
Hi.
Councilmember Sanchez.
Hi.
Councilmember Hornick. And Mayor Silva.
Hi.
Thank you, Ruth.
Thank you.
Moving on now, we go to item number eight, Ordinance Number twenty-five dash O five, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Beelton, California, adopting and designating fire hazard severity zones in the City of Beelton. Introduction and first reading, and our staff contact will be Planning Director Andrea.
Good evening, Mayor Silva and members of City Council. Before you this evening, our proposed updates to the Fire Hazard Severity Zone map for the City of Beelton, as proposed by the State Fire Marshal. These maps get updated from time to time by review of the California Department of Forestry and CalFire, and are based upon a number of modeling factors that are primarily rooted in the probability of areas, of the areas burning and potential fire behavior in the area. The maps are updated for local responsibility areas within the state, including the City of Beelton. The purpose of these designations is to increase life safety and reduce potential for structure ignitability by reducing fuels and improving construction features that would prevent ignition and ember intrusion, thereby reducing the threat to life and structure loss during a wildfire event. So the updated maps were released on March tenth of this year by CalFire, and cities are required to adopt the maps by ordinance within a hundred and twenty days of receiving them from CalFire. We did take public comment on the matter in accordance with the requirements, which started on May ninth of this year and through today. So we did not receive any public comments on this matter as of now. So the proposed updated map is included in Attachment One to your staff report. It includes areas within the city limits of the City of Beelton that are what are being called as moderate, high, and very high fire hazard severity zones. So until now, the City of Beelton has not yet had any areas within the city in the very high fire hazard severity zones. There are now areas within the city limits which are categorized as very high, as well as high. We do have Santa Barbara County Fire Chief Fred Tan with us here on Zoom. And he can speak in more detail to the implications of these new designations if desired. However, essentially what it does is places additional building standards for new construction within these high and very high zones newly designated, and could require additional property development standards, as well as defensible space requirements and also natural hazard real estate disclosure requirements. The ordinance that's being considered this evening includes the addition of a Beelton Municipal Code Section, which is eight point one two oh three oh, which will memorialize the adoption of the designation of these twenty twenty-five fire hazard severity zones for the City of Beelton by reference. Additionally, the map will be included in the general plan safety element, which we are currently updating as part of our comprehensive general plan update process. I will note, just for a text correction in the ordinance on page two, section two, it's in two places. The added code section was incorrectly listed as section eighteen point one two oh three oh. So as part of the council's motion this evening, I would ask that this correction be just included to correctly state eight point one two oh three oh in the ordinance. With that, staff's recommendation is that City Council conduct the introduction and first reading of Ordinance twenty-five dash zero five, an ordinance adopting and designating fire hazard severity zones in the City of Beelton only by title only and waiting for the reading. That concludes my report. Again, Chief Fred Tan is also available on Zoom with Santa Barbara County Fire this evening and is available to answer any questions the council may have, as am I. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And I think we'll have to, so there will be, in any motion approved tonight, there will be an edit that needs to be noted in that. Okay. So we'll just need to have your guidance should we get to that point. So we move to any questions by the council for staff or with Chief Tan here on Zoom. Thank you for joining us today, Mr. Tan.
Thank you for having me.
Any questions for staff? Okay, we do have questions. Yeah.
Go ahead. I'm so used, I'm so used to being the only one, please.
I have two questions. One is, given that it looks like my property is in this area, is this something that would require me to recuse myself? Okay. Second question is, is there an interactive map that would show specific addresses for those on the border line, so to speak, of the different designations? So I'll defer to Chief Tan on that.
Yeah, once again, thank you for having me. A little minor correction. So my, I'm like, my role with the county fire department is the fire marshal. I'm not sure which job would be more fun, fire chief or fire marshal, but it's just some semantics. But on the San Barbara County Fire website, sbcfire.com, one of our banners on, one of our splash pages is the Fire Hazard Severity Zones. And if you click on that, on that link, and the, on the first page, it'll take you to our Fire Hazard Severity Zone page with all the maps for the, all the local responsibility areas and unincorporated LRA. And towards the middle of the page, you'll see a, a interactive web map that you can click on, and you'll be able to put addresses into and search to see whether a parcel home or some of her, or other areas are in the, in the new indicated zones.
Thank you.
Any other questions, Vice Mayor Lewis?
No.
Councilmember Hornick?
Uh, yes, Fire Marshal Tan, sorry. I didn't see that on the SBC Fire, which I just pulled up when you were talking. But I can try and find it. You're saying that wildfire preparedness is, I'm sorry, the the fire zone is somewhere on the splash page in the homepage?
Click there.
Oh, there it is. Yeah. You're, you're, you're good.
And scroll up.
Thank you. This question is actually for you, Mayor Silva. When we had our Rancho Estates meeting, we had somebody from County Fire there, right?
Yes.
And then I thought, I thought they were saying like they had analyzed through GIS our, our area. And like, we were, we were good.
I think maybe.
Yes, our representatives in the Fire Department at the Ranch Club Estates meeting indicated that based upon their GIS data and their analysis, they didn't have particular concerns about the wildfire potential in the area around the City of Beelton. This is different. This set of state maps is established by the state, not by local agencies. We don't have any input into it. And Fire Marshal, please correct me. I don't believe County Fire has any input into this map either, once it's been released.
Yeah, that's correct. So once the state, once the state designates these areas, we can't make them less restrictive. We do have the option, and I work with the cities and the county, to make, to see if anyone wanted to extend the zones any further into the city. I believe the meeting, I wasn't able to make that meeting that's, that's referred to, but it was the Deputy Fire Marshal, Vince LaRocco, and then one of my captains, the Vegetation Management Captain, Dustin McKibben. So I, I would confirm that we don't have, we don't have those concerns. We don't have, you know, while anything could happen. You know, we don't have the same concerns that we would in a Mission Canyon, Painted Cave, Palisades Eaton, you know, this, this area is not characterized with sixty to eighty mile per hour phone, you know, the overall, the overall name for the sundowner, Santa, Santa North Wind, Diablo Winds. You got, it's just not characterized by those. You don't have the, the extreme topography and the fuels. While these maps do, over a fifty-year period, indicate the likelihood there might be some fire along a parcel on vegetation, it doesn't take into account the mitigations that County Fire is taking, that the city is taking, that the homeowners are taking. So it, we do feel pretty comfortable. And there have been a lot of fires in, in the, in the San Inez Valley. But there's a lot of things that are really beneficial, light fuels, agricultural fuel breaks, highways, fire stations within, within probably fifteen minutes of the City of Beelton, and also our new fire hawk that can grow up a thousand gallons. So there, there's a lot of beneficial things that, that can really help us fight fire in this area.
Thank you, Fire Marshal Tan. That was very helpful. Is it a fair categorization to say, or paraphrase to say that, so this map is, is distributed by the state, but the county maybe doesn't fully agree with the designations that they have put on it?
It, it not all, you know, we don't have the way, this map is, like I said, is supposed, is supposed to be developed and designated and published every five years. Until recently, it's been very difficult. Like, you know, to do any GIS type work to, to do this type of fire modeling is, is expensive. It's really difficult, especially on a statewide scale. Now with the technology that we'll probably see this every five years, is there over the next thirty to fifty years, a chance that you'll have some fire on these parcels? There, there could be, you know, but it doesn't have, it doesn't mean that this, this fire has to be destructive. If there's good defensible space, you may see some fire, you know. My, you know, I, I live in LA County. I live right in the middle of the San Fernando Valley in Northridge. As I've been speaking to a lot of city councils and the county or supervisors, at one point during the, during the fires down south, I could turn to the south and see the Eaton Fire. And I could turn to the east and look at, or sorry, the south and look at the Palisades Fire, east to the Eaton Fire. I could see the Hughes Fire to the north. And I was able to drive around, take a look. And when the fire happened in West Hills, that was a really good example of what I see fire in this area to be. While there was a lot of resources and some panic, I drove over there to take a look and, and I seen this area, you know, good construction, seven-day construction, good managed land, light fuels, really moderate winds. And that thousand-acre fire did not destroy any homes. So there'll be fire on that landscape again, because as Californians, we have to live with wildfire. There will be fire on that landscape again, and again, and again. But if we maintain the homes and the, and the defensible space standards and the fuels and the, and the fire roads in those areas, you're more that, you're very likely to have that same result where the fire will just go out. It'll be big, but it'll go out and there'll be you know, no firefighter injuries, hopefully no public injuries, and no, no homes destroyed. So that's kind of what I see in this area, as long as we keep working.
Okay. A couple other questions there. Thank you. So, so this map that's generated by the state, does this the map that goes to the state insurance commissioner who will set insurance rates for residents?
So Commissioner Lara has, has, has essentially instructed the insurance companies not to, not to use hazard maps to set rates. I know it's a little bit of splitting hairs here, but hazard is in, hazard just refers directly to vegetation. These maps were developed with no human mitigations in mind, kind of like a flood map. When these maps were directed by state legislature to be produced, they were, they were, they're essentially, the flood maps were referenced. Make fire maps like, like flood maps, you know. Where will fire occur on the landscape? So Commissioner Lara has, has instructed the insurance companies to assess risk. And that's, so what, that's what homeowners, the Fire Department, the City of Beelton, Fire Safety Council, anyone maintaining fuels, county roads, your city, city public works, we are, we are mitigating the hazards which will benefit the homeowner's risk profiles. So risk is what insurance companies are supposed to assess. And that is, you know, whether homeowners are not doing their defensible space, whether homeowners have combustible building elements with their, with the outside of their homes or single-pane windows, wood shingle roofs, which, you know, and, and developing in the City of Beelton, one of the results of very high fire hazard designation in, in the outskirts of Beelton is that you're going to have seven-eight, what's called seven-eight construction, high-fire hazard construction. So it's fire-resistant roofing, fire-resistant sightings, dual-pane windows, and more. It'd be hard pressed to find new development that isn't that anyway, you know. And, and, and there's more elements, but, but I, you know, I think the community is, is actually very resilient in these areas. So. Hopefully that answers your question. I know my, I think my, my answers have been a little bit long-winded, but the commissioner has instructed insurance companies to, to assess risk. So if homeowners can, can harden their homes and maintain defensible space, you know, and I suggest calling the Fire Safety Council of the county, who's moving their, a lot of efforts to the North County. And they can, they can create some firewise communities and, and we help them assess homes as well. So. But, but that should be, you know, just because you're in a very high fire hazard designation, doesn't mean that your, your home is at more of a risk of getting destroyed.
I appreciate that. I just have one more question and I'll let you off the hook here. So I, I don't know if the public can see this. We have in our packet here this, this map that Fire Marshal Tan is, is referencing. And just south of, the southern terminus of the border of the city here, there's Rancho de Maria, and then there's this very high fire hazard severity zone as designated by the state. One of the concerns for residents in, in that neighborhood, in my neighborhood, is that insurance companies are canceling or raising rates. And that reds. And um that red zone right there straddles the uh Zaca Creek. Uh, I believe that's Zaca Creek. Maybe that's the riverbed.
The river.
The riverbed, excuse me. Um, and so accessing that to clear brush, uh to do this fire mitigation, as you mentioned, is uh tricky and hard, right? Because I believe that uh there's multiple uh governmental agencies that manage the the riverbed, and so to clear brush, uh residents don't even know how to go about doing that and and creating that defensible space. I don't know if you have any information on how that might occur, or if the county has looked into that, or anything of that nature.
Yeah, that's been an area that's uh been concerned for Buellton residents for a while. We'll say that there's, there's been no fire history in that in that riverbed. Um, so, again, over thirty to fifty years, could you see some fire in that area just because of it is a vegetated area? There, yes, there could be some fire there, but we we're pretty confident that we can, because of the characteristics around it, um riverbed, it, th- those fires probably will, we can keep pretty small. Um, it's, it is hard to get into creeks. You you do have to get uh a lot of permits to get in there. But, you know, you can get along the embank, not not right on the embankments, because you can't, you have to give that some space, but um, one thing that we, you know, defensible space around homes, and then just outside the communities by the HOAs, we can work with them to determine some areas. But if we can get a place that firefighters can get between the homes and any fuel there, it's gonna increase survivability. Um, like I said, we live in California, uh we live in Santa Barbara County. There is gonna be fire. Um, we just have to be sure that we we can, we can fight fires best we can and 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 defend homes. Um, so we may not be able to completely clear the riverbed, but but like I said, there's been, we have, we have a lot of history on fires, where they start, how they start, and that's not a place that it typically starts or spreads. Um, but it doesn't mean say that there shouldn't be some work, maybe a hundred, two hundred feet off the edges of it, so that we can, we can keep fires smaller and contained in this, in that area.
How would, how would we go about coordinating that?
Um, I guess we think, we've, we've assessed it multiple times, so there's a um, I think uh maybe just through uh through your, your city manager and and Andrew, we can, let's, we can have another meeting and assess it, and I'll I'll work with staff. Just uh, let's just set up an appointment to have some discussions and um, but we have assessed it on the, you know, our boots on the ground have assessed it, and we feel pretty comfortable about. It may not be comfortable to a lot of the citizens there, but we feel pretty comfortable about where fires start.
I think it's. Uh, we appreciate that, uh, but it's also, like I said, the insurance rates and getting canceled. Uh, that that is obviously a concern for residents there.
Councilmember Sanchez, any questions?
No, I I appreciate your question about the insurance, but it also in your area, the golf course is kind of a nice fire.
Yeah, the golf course is kind of a nice fire break there, but I I can see the, you know, the clo- the close proximity to the, you know, on the outskirts of town, but uh I I appreciate you coming tonight. Thank you.
I I had two questions. One is for our staff, just to know. Um, I see here that it's also mapped out, and I am assuming, I don't know how it packs the building codes, and we can talk about later, but in the space that we've designated for future expansion with UGB options with that, that we do end up going into the orange and to the red, and so there will be implications of building code when we, if we look to develop in those spaces in the future?
Yeah, just, and so that's something that we are um looking at as part of the general plan update.
So, that will be baked into the general. Okay, perfect for that. And then the only other one is, and I don't know Fire Marshal Tan, I, there's so many acronyms, and I'm not sure if you could want to speak to it, but is it the CWPP? Is that, is that the correct one that we're working on as well, that the entire like valley is kind of working on? Is that correct? Or is that a different, should be talking about?
Yeah, the Community Wildfire Protection Plan, so it, that is uh in the initial conversations and planning. Um, so, all, the entire front country from Carpentaria to Gabiota now have uh have there's one, two, three, sorry, I have to count on my fingers, one, two, three. Uh, one, two, three, four, five, six CWPPs from Carpentaria to Gabiota. Lompoc, the Lompoc area is starting, has, is in the process with the Fire Safe Council of uh of uh creating a CWPP. Uh, our advice for this uh San Inez CWPP is that it it borders where the Lompoc Valley is gonna end, takes it uh over through Solvang into San Inez and and somewhere around Los Alamos, uh we create a boundary for a San Inez Valley CWPP, so. Um, that, that document is uh is, we just finished one for the Santa Barbara foothills. It's not a shell document, but it does give us an idea. There'll be a lot of fire modeling, uh assessment of fire risk. Um, and uh it'll give us some uh some clues to let us know if we've been doing the right things as as a county fire agency within within uh, within the area.
Okay, thank you very much. I guess then it's just for us, if there's means for us to assist, please let us know. But um, any other questions at this time? If not, uh any public, I know we've been told there's been no public comment, but in the discussion, did any public comment come in?
Not.
Anyone? Okay, great. We'll bring it back to council for further discussion and for a possible motion. And I did want to also thank the efforts. I just came from the Ranch Club Estates, and they are having a meeting with the Fire Safe Council today to see about getting them certified as a firewise community. So, I really appreciate the residents who are taking this serious and and investing into that with the times. And I appreciate the partnership with the Firewise Council and with County Fire to make that happen, since it's, you guys are handling a lot. So, thank you for all the efforts you've been doing and making resources available to our community. Um, any other discussion, or if not, a possible motion to approve with the edit that we'd have to hear about?
I motion to approve with the suggested edit to the code being point zero three to point three, correct? Uh, no, I lied, with the edit.
And this is an ordinance, so it should probably be introduced by title only and further reading, reading weight.
And introduced by title only and further.
Reading weight.
Further reading weight.
We'll, we will bring this back for a second reading at a future meeting.
Yes, all of that.
I will second.
Okay, Vice Mayor Lewis.
Hi.
Mayor Silva.
Hi.
Councilmember Hornick.
Hi.
And Councilmember Sanchez.
Bye.
All right. Thank you again for joining us tonight, Fire Marshal Tan. We appreciate your time.
Thank you very much for having me.
Thank you.
We will move on to council member comments and items. Councilmember Sanchez.
Uh, I wanted to thank the city manager for helping with my computer. I went while, let me, this week, if I couldn't get into the, and I also wanted to give a update on the sable oil pipeline. The people were uh on Facebook complaining about the noise. And I went down there to find out what all, what was going on. They had put some sound. Uh, what was happening is they were pushing a pig through the line to clear the water out of the line, so that, that was a big, huge compressor and low, and so they're getting all the water out of the line, and it's like two point some million gallons of water that they pushed through the line, so that's what all the noise was across the river. And that was clearing one section. They pressure test a section, they skipped a section, then they pressure test another section. And uh, anyway, just so people know, it's, they're not pumping oil or anything. All that is, is, is a safety uh thing they're going through to check the line. And, I'll just. And also, I want to comment on the speed signs. There, I was happy to see the speed signs on uh South Avenue flags. And I was surprised to see it, and I think that they're uh, uh, they were a nice presentation, and everyone can see them uh coming from both directions. I think that uh, that's very helpful and and uh you know what's going on when you go through there. I think it'll help with the safety. I appreciate the staff getting those all put together. And I think that's it. Thank you.
Councilmember Horneck?
Thank you. Um, I wanted to ask, and I apologize for not asking prior to the meeting, but City Manager Scott Wolf, if if we had heard from the library about, I know they were gonna do um counts and get back to us about, like, if we're gonna expand library hours. I wasn't sure if there was an update on that.
They had done counts for the first two months following the opening of the library. Uh, they received very few comments, so they asked if we would like, if I would like to have them continue uh and and work it through the county's website. So, they're in the process of that right now. Um, I expect they should have collected some more material, so I'll check with them next week and see what we can find uh from, you know, from what they've.
What people.
Managed to to rake in, and then we can try and and create a a profile from that.
Okay, thank you. Um, I also want to bring up the idea of um some kind of uh speed or vehicle control uh in Ranch de Maria. Um, I posted uh and asked neighbors about um the traffic there. There's some concern, it's kind of coming at you, Rose. Um, some concern about when people come down, could go through know the name of that street, Shadow Mountain, Shadow Mountain, the one you turn into. Um, it goes all the way down the golf course. There are some speed humps, and then there's crossing over thirty five, or excuse me, crossing over Six Flag Circle and going down into the uh golf course area. Coming back up is a bit of a blind spot there, and people will gun it to kind of come up and over. And so there's some concern about that area. Uh, I was unsure if there was something we could potentially look into for that, or if it's already been done, a traffic study has been done about that.
So, concern from the vehicles going back up the driveway?
Right.
And co- going through the.
Right, so through the, through the neighborhood, through the intersection. There's no stop sign there. They just kind of go up, they accelerate to go uphill. It's, you know, it's up hills, you can't really see, and it's common for kids and pedestrians to go across, and they kind of go through it.
Well, that, that that driveway into the parking lot is private, uh that's maintained and operated by the HOA. So, the HOA could put a stop sign there.
The HOA owns the driveway going down? I thought, I thought it was half, at least half of.
No, the city is responsible for half of the maintenance, but it's all HOA property.
The HOA property is all of that driveway and parking lot?
Correct.
But it's a public golf course?
It is now. When it was originally developed, it was not. It was a private course. And it was, if I'm not mistaken, it belonged to the Homeowners Association. At some point, they conveyed that course to the city who took over the management and operation of it. Uh, in order to access the golf course, we needed road access, and so we were granted, I believe, an easement to access the golf course through that driveway.
Okay.
In exchange for the city's participation in the maintenance of half the cost of maintenance for that roadway.
Okay, okay, nice. So, is there no, knowing that, then, then no
Right.
Traffic state would be done there, because there's no traffic going across.
Right.
Probably.
So, if they truly would like to put a stop sign at the top there before vehicles enter that area, they they're free to do so.
Okay, cool. And if it was on the other side, then there would be something that the city would do.
Right, and I I thought there's a stop sign on that side of Shadow Mountain. I'd have to double check, but.
There's not.
Come up, even if you are going slow and you stop, you're stopping in what effectively operates as the crosswalk between those two corners.
Right.
So.
Is there one on Shadow Mountain, neither direction? But not Shadow Mountain, Six Flag Circle?
No, there's no, there's no stop sign on that intersection.
Okay.
Uh, there's a speed hump, like, I don't know, twenty five yards prior to, if you're headed toward the golf course.
Yeah, and to look at that, we'd have to do a study for for us.
Thank you. I don't have any other comments, I don't think.
Okay, Vice Mayor Lewis?
I just have one comment. I would like to compliment the rec center and the amazing job that they do with all the kids at summer camp and how excited the kids are. And they're great with adults, like interacting with them is great, but watching them interact with the kids, all of them, and how great their energy is and how effective they are at amping the kids up. It's really amazing. It's the first time we've experienced it as a family for our kids, for any of our kids, and it's it's top notch, so they're doing great.
Thank you very much. There is a reason why our summer camps are the most popular summer camps in the valley. And I think that has everything to do with it.
All right. Um, a few, I know, we're all just doing thank yous at this point, so I have a few. Um, I wanted to thank the city staff and the teachers in the fourth graders for our final city in the schools, and former mayor Holly Sierra. We got to see them vote. I didn't get to stay for the entire thing, but it was a really good city council meeting that those kids were way better at this than we've ever been. Honestly, it was really impressive. So, um, thank you for all the work that went into that, and it was really great to see building engagement with local stuff. And I know that that's a lot of extra work on our staff, so thank you to that and to the teachers. Um, I also wanted, um, speaking of extra work, I want to take a moment uh thanking everyone's patience during, as I've been calling it now, the the Carmageddon of Buellton that took place a couple of weeks ago. And I want to just share that in the time driving here with the McMurray and two forty six intersection, the cones were removed, we assume moved by maybe someone to open it into two lanes, not appropriately. And in calling Rose, our public works director, and having them, they're already resolving it right now. So, I just want to thank you to the attention. I know that it's oftentimes, we only see it when things are really struggling, and I just want to thank the city staff. There's been multiple extra meetings, multiple hours spent. I just know that that's a thankless thing, so thank you to everyone who's been trying to make that as peaceful as possible and all the negotiation to move that to evening construction. Um, finally, as I did get the, in email, I think it was sent to our council from the Buellton Friends of the Library about an interest in possibly not moving forward with building a wall in the I don't think it's called the garage anymore, but the de facto garage.
We, we have a, it's anticipated to be a conference room in that garage space, yes.
So, there's been some interest brought forth from the uh Friends of the Library and the utilization of what happens when you don't decide what a space is gonna be used for, and it's turned into, I don't quite understand what the kitchen means, but I guess it's something kids are using it, and it's like, it's become kind of a play area for for parents to utilize, and the Friends of the Library have been utilizing it. They've been approached by our um principal to talk about having that space a bit more available for after school activities, like for kids to do card games, Dungeons and Dragons, and a bit more of a utilitarian space. So, anyway, the request was made about seeing about agendizing a discussion to actually review not building the wall. And I think that if the community is looking for additional space and amenities, this is an opportunity to maybe let community input guide which way we use some of this space. So, I was wondering if there'd be appetite for the council to agendize something like that, so we could discuss about leaving it open.
Yeah, I I think that um having that accessible seven days a week, and that the whole idea with have an extra room was so that we wouldn't be, um, we wouldn't have to worry about the library's hours. We want to have public hours. So, that's part of the, was part of the discussion with having um public rooms. As far as splitting it, did we, we, we decided, I thought, to have a conference room or some kind of meeting room, but it can be a meeting room for kids after school as well. And and you're talking about making it a whole.
Just not putting in the wall, actually, and just leaving the space open, because it's being, the space that's being utilized right now, the Friends of the Library seem to be having their volunteers opening it up, and it's being used by the community at this time. If there was a wall add to it and turns into a conference room, they're hoping to just leave the space open, so that's a more community space utilized, utilized. I don't have all details. I know we need to agendize it, so I'm just asking more about if we could agendize that discussion, maybe have the Friends of the Library invite them to come and talk about what their vision is and see if we'd be willing to course correct out of not just having it be a wall built, but give them the space to present maybe another solution.
I'm happy to give concurrence on that. I I spoke to Holly today about that. She told me that we didn't need to bring anything up, but if we do, I'm happy to.
Can we just give you our direction?
I thought she said something about her not being ready or or.
We don't have to bring it right away, but I would, if if the council gives direction, I'd happy, be happy to reach out to former mayor Sierra, visit the site, talk to her about what they're looking for, and bring something back to the council.
Okay, well, then, thank you very much. You're good with that, everyone? Okay. Oh, I was gonna, I was gonna move to community reports unless you had something you wanted to add in the.
No, um, I did, another uh public comment thing was, um, there's a lot of people concerned with this Hundred Hill School deal, and um like, it was a big secret that we, they've had public meetings there, they've been talking, but I don't know if we've had more um public, public meetings. I think we should agendize a special meeting so that that'll be the subject of the meeting, because it's they know, the people that are concerned with it aren't gonna come to one of these meetings, you know, and wait till it comes on the end of the agenda. But since it's a concern with a lot of people and and they've acted like they weren't told anything, or they weren't in on the discussion, I think we should make it a special meeting. Um, just for that part to kind of step it up instead of waiting month, you know, two sixty days and next month and all that.
Are you suggesting having a town hall, or you want to agendize?
Have a regular meeting like we did for the budget. You know, we did that meeting for the budget.
Are, are you referring to a meeting to to discuss the 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 formal approval of the project?
Right, because it just seems like if it's on the agenda, some people show up or not, but if they, everybody know, if everybody knows that's what the meeting's about, I think it'll be more, they'll feel more important that this is what we're concerned with, not just throwing it on the, you know, as an addition to something during the meeting.
If I, I don't know if I can speak to that, Craig, but I'll just say, I do know it's on planning commission July third. So, there is gonna be the public hearing July third, the planning mission about the Hundred Hill School.
We, we will also, we will also. We, we will also, we will also um be holding a town hall on it ahead of time. Um if um if I understand Mr. Sanchez correctly, because the applicant has expressed some concerns about. The, the process that we're going through and, and the timing of everything. Um we can't get it on the July tenth meeting because of uh noticing issues after the planning commission meeting and the next available regular meeting. Is the twenty fourth, uh which is the end of the month. They were hoping and needing apparently to be under construction by July first, if this was going to happen and their big concern is they've got. Parents who need to decide whether they're going to send their kids to this school or another one and they need to know one way or another whether it's going to happen. Obviously, I ca- I can't call a special meeting, it's not my job. Uh but if the council wants to do that, I'm happy to look into what meeting dates might be available or we can hold off and just hold it on the twenty fourth.
And I'm sorry, because I seem confused a lot, but.
It's confusing.
You, you, so is the planning commission on July third? The only item they got.
Yes.
So there'll be that hearing. And are you saying we're gonna, we're gonna call this convene a special meeting? You're suggesting that was something we can do?
I'm suggesting that the applicant is pressing for something earlier than the twenty fourth. We don't have a meeting they can get to, regular meeting prior to the twenty fourth. So if the council is interested in that, you'd need to make a, a, a decision to schedule a special meeting. Otherwise, we will simply move forward with the dirt, with the uh, the, the regular meeting schedule.
It can't be on the tenth.
It cannot be on the tenth, that there, there are, there, given the, the requirements of the, the planning commission hearing for this permit. And given uh some potential conflicts of interest with the city council. Acting to uh issue or deny a license on the property. The planning commission process has to be complete before the city council can take action. Planning commission process isn't complete until the appeal period for their decision has passed, which would be on about the thirteenth. And so, or the fourteenth, actually. So the, you know, that, that, that puts a potential meeting date sometime. Uh if it's not going to be on the twenty fourth, if it's going to be before that, sometime between the fifteenth and the twenty third. Um it, there, there's not a lot of time to be saved, but i- in the applicant's position has been that. Every day counts at this point for, from both the parent's perspective and if the school is approved moving forward the construction standpoint, so. Um a- again, that's the reason why we have the, the issue. It's up to the council which way you want to set it.
We, we would have to have a meeting after the thirteenth, too.
It would have to be after the fourteenth, actually.
I'm a, I'm a little, I am a little reticent to almost the point that you brought up of understanding it is that. If the community feels like there hasn't been enough discussion and disclosure, I do feel like by. Expediting the process, it can feel a bit more to that degree. I, I just worry about the perception of. Our, we had community members reach out and say they feel like this has been dealt with not appropriately or not with enough information given, so I do worry about. Shrinking down the time for public notice, for public input, for public perception and all that. So I don't know how much nine days.
They would get, well, they, they, we'd, they'd have a lot more time for a presentation, I think that's what it was for.
Yeah, I mean, to me, it's like if we wanted to have a special meeting, because we have our twenty fourth, if we wanted to look into a meeting on the twenty second. To make it where it's, there's one meeting we're having that this is like, we're, we're, to your point about making it a very specific purposeful meeting. I'm open to do that, but I guess I'm more about making sure that the reason for doing that is for. The public to have better access to the information they're looking for and to have their words said. Not as much for the applicant to be given an expedited process, because I think that would be not a good thing for us to be. Adjusting for. So whatever's the best for the community to get their input heard is where I would be at this and not from an applicant expedited process.
Anybody who had anything to say about it would know that about the ten days. I mean, there was some people concerned, the ten days is what the, it's just more awareness of the ten days and it would be more.
I tend to agree that if we're, if the feeling from the citizens is that. There hasn't been enough time for them to engage in thoughtful discussion and uh assessment of what. The plan is or what they're asking for. Setting a meeting that is not following the, the. General timeline or what you would think the normal or routine timeline and making it earlier plays into that. Feeling that the city is trying to fast track something without their information. I would rather kind of keep it on the same schedule and if we need an extra meeting to give them more time, totally agree, like. That's fine. I would just like to keep it within the same timeframe so that it's. Well received and well respected and easily defensible, that it followed the same process as everyone else, because. My concern is the next applicant coming in saying, well, you fast tracked it for so and so. So why is my application any less important to the city or to the residents than, you know, application?
Yeah, I agree. Um yeah, and John, if you want to have such a many talks about jobs, uh under the Hill Schools, what, and whatever is proposed. I'm happy to do that, but I think we should have a planning commission meeting first, hear what the public has to say. I think that's the only thing on agenda, Greg, and we're all with that.
I, I would say this, if the council wants to have a public meeting. It really needs to be a meeting where the council sits and listens. Um because if a planning commission decision were appealed, it would obviously come to the four of you. And so you can't have a meeting where any of the four of you offer any comments. Prior to whether you find out whether you need to sit in appeal or not, otherwise you'll be deemed to have prejudged it. Um a public meeting is perfectly fine if you want to host a meeting for the applicant to explain their project. To the public and to the council, that's fine, but um I, I will certainly try to be there if. I'm at all able to help make sure that none of you winds up saying more than is defensible.
Well, I appreciate that, Greg. Thank you for that uh keen insight. I would just say that that is what, exactly what we have the planning commission for. The planning commission is that body to hear these things and to, you know, to weigh in and have the applicant give their presentation. And uh I would just, I mean, i- if there's, if there's a special meeting you want to set, I'd be open to it, but I, I would like to hear what the planning commission has to say too.
So just for clarification again, we will be holding a town hall meeting on June twenty fifth. With staff, I'm sorry, the twenty third, wrong, wrong town hall meeting. Uh June twenty third um to discuss, and then we've invited the neighborhood to that. Uh to discuss the Hundred Hill School and it will be a meeting that is um. It, it essentially will be attended by the, the planning department staff and myself and the applicant to the project. The pu- the sole purpose of which will be to answer questions that the public has. Um it, you know, we're not gonna, we're not gonna um criticize the project, we're not gonna um uh advocate for the project. Questions that the public has and will give them answers to it. They can then decide what they want to present to the planning commission in, in terms of. Support or opposition for the project. I know that, that Mr. Sanchez was referring to here was, was. More about how, how to make that decision earlier than later.
You said June twenty third?
Uh we will be doing that on June twenty third.
I was not familiar with that.
That's, that's, you, you would not be familiar with that. That has just been uh put together and actually the notice went out for that today. We've been trying to find a date for that. Uh we were originally planning a little earlier, but um it's June twenty third. And um it's not a city council meeting.
Sort of discourage our participation?
I would generally speaking, I would do that just to avoid the perception that the council is, is. Prejudging or influencing the project in some way.
But, yeah, okay, that's good to know. So that, so people will get notice? Email me and say, hey, what's going on with this? I, I don't know.
The notices are mailed out today. Uh there will also be, if it hasn't already been put up, it will be put up by tomorrow afternoon. A uh, a, there will be another uh informational blast sent out on our Beulton Engage page advising everyone of this meeting, so. That um I don't know that that made it out today, I'll have to check.
Okay.
If it did, great. If not, I'll take care of it tomorrow.
Okay, so everybody knows, if there's going to be a town hall in my district, I would love to give a heads up about it.
Okay, sure.
No, without pushing, but we are players in this deal. We're not like, we're not trying to push the coffee shop to get closed, you know. Or, or open earlier or anything, but part of this deal is a city, I mean, we're one of the participants in the whole deal, so it's not like we're pushing. You know what I mean?
You, you do have a different role in this than you typically do, however. Because the planning commission decision can be appealed to you, you may also have that regulatory role, aside from just the role of the property owner. And so it's important to protect against the perception of a conflict of interest on the regulatory role.
If I may, oh, I'm sorry, maybe you want to, we have a, we, at this point, it sounds like. There's the July third planning commission and then there's a July tenth meeting that's taking place, which will have a better.
July twenty fourth.
Oh, we don't have, we, city council does not.
City council has one on July tenth, but this, this meeting can't.
No, no, I understand, yes. So I'm saying is there's a July third meeting that's taking place and then there's the July tenth city council meeting. Why don't, I would say that at this point, I'd rather make a decision about if we should have a special meeting on a special day. After the planning commission meeting has been completed, after we're a bit further into the process, because to me. This is more about public outreach and if it's about serving the community so that we pick a date that's specifically for this issue. Then that's what it's about. It's not about an expedited process for the applicant, it's about a diligent process for the. Community to come and speak their mind and, and get their questions answered. So I would prefer to wait until making, I would prefer to not schedule anything if we even will. Until that discussion can be had on the July tenth meeting and we have more facts.
And I, I can appreciate that just with the caveat that if you wait until the July tenth meeting. The earliest date it could happen would be the twenty fourth anyway, simply because we couldn't get noticing out.
Oh, gotcha.
Before.
I should have let you interrupt me before I got on that tirade.
I shouldn't say we could, we may not be able to get noticing out if we, if we wait until the tenth. If the planning commission decision is not appealed, whichever way it goes, uh if the planning commission denies it and it's not appealed. Um it's dead. If it, planning commission approves it and it's not appealed, then we can move ahead and the city council. Here, we don't need a hearing for the licensure issue, that's just a business item, so we wouldn't need that, the extra noticing time. But if you're looking for uh to deal with an appeal process. Uh the July tenth meeting both would be within the appeal periods, there's no guarantee of being able to set it the date at that point. And even if it's been appealed at that point, it may be too late to authorize. Like the notice any meeting earlier than the twenty fourth.
And my parents saying it seems like our appetite is to maintain the July twenty fourth timeline.
What are the chances of making our July tenth meeting on the fifteenth? Does it have to be on the tenth or from the first meeting?
Well, we, we have, we have a notice meeting on July tenth and that is our rate study meeting. And that, this is.
Going to get added into something.
What we're talking about is adding a special meeting. We were going to cancel our July twenty fourth meeting. It's one of the meetings we typically cancel during the year. Um you could move that, but it would no longer be a regular meeting, it would be a special meeting, so you'd still have to go through this project or this process you're going through, right?
So I was just trying to avoid like last time we had a budget meeting and then at the end that people sat and wait till the end till we had a big long meeting.
So, okay, I think, I think at this point, then the timing will maintain with July tenth and July twenty fourth. Is that a fair assessment then, everyone?
That's fun.
Okay, okay, great.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay, um it depends, I appreciate the filing of a, of a public comment at this time. We have moved rather further into this process at this point. And so I, um I guess since it's a non-agendized item and we're beyond that, it's up to, it's, if the council would so entertain, we can. At least allow this since he made the trip out here, but it's up to us if we're okay with a quick public. So if you could please make sure we're doing public comment in the future, it's always at the beginning of the meeting. Um this is, but if you wouldn't like to come up and make your case before we move to written communications, we'll do that there for you, so.
I appreciate your time and we'll be very brief. Uh my background, I'm an architect, Harvard educated. And I put a lot on both sides of the review. I think it's important because I do s- watch and listen. To comments made next door and public comments of friends of mine about the growth of. Development, P. Soup Anderson, and I just wanted to bring three simple comments and I will be only less than three minutes. For what I have to say. First off, public perception, I think is very important. You've been brought in to represent us and. The meetings that should occur really should look at two other things that I think haven't been addressed. As an architect, when I have clients come in and say, can we do this or this or this, much of the time. I don't know and I have to go by what the planning commission says. On the other side here are homeowners, like me, saying, whoa, this development, what's going to happen to traffic and. Drive through in Beulton. So my second point for you to consider in these next meetings is. I believe as a council and as mayor, you have a responsibility for a vision. And the reason I say this is we can't stop growth. We can't stop Ed St. George or anyone else doing what they want to do based on what we have as. Planning guidelines that are followed and eventually approved, but part of that future growth. And this becomes very important for you, I think, to understand. What was Bill Bowell Spain before Frank Gehry put that giant museum there? Today, Bill Bowell Spain, unfortunately or fortunately. Is the number one destination for all American tourists traveling to Europe. Above Paris, above Rome, above London. So future growth. We can get the architect and developer to say, what does this represent for Beulton? Traffic impact study. That's something we can be proud of to where it goes. Other than just a copy of a art deco building that some say is too high. I can't judge that. We have people much more qualified than me and others making those decisions. And finally. Potential development. So often I come into council member meetings. Where council members have been voted into place and we're really just doing a job rather than looking ahead. And being bold and saying, let's get everyone involved, let's be excited about what this is, because that becomes positive, win-win. It's up to you and often, often. Right now and what I'm trying to do in Santa Barbara on the project. It's limited by the vision of the council and the planning department. To do something that can be extremely valuable to all of us if it is done in a responsible manner. And uh I appreciate the time to speak and having the opportunity for public outreach and I hope. In the review of this process, we don't go backwards to what Solvang is trying to do. That new development with the little tiny houses on the corner next to the bank. My God, this is two thousand twenty five. Do you know what we could do? I know, but most of people can't envision that. So creativity in the review process and in the eventual. Resolution of us, yes, it includes us, but should also be a vision for the future. And most of the time, it's not bold and most of the time, it's not courageous. We're just stepping in line. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. And just for the record, could you state your name too? I apologize.
Yes, my name is Quentin Parker.
Thank you, Mr.
I'm an architect, I've been doing this for about forty years. I don't know Mr. St. George really well. But I did speak to him once and he is a reasonable man. And I also know, the other thing is NIMBY. Not in my backyard. I know we can't stop growth. What can we do that puts Beulton on the map that satisfies a majority of people?
Thank you very much for your time.
Where do you live? You live, you just moved to town? I, are you?
I'm sorry?
You live in town?
Yeah, I live in town here on Port Atlas, way up to hell. But I just, I think it's really important that you keep in mind that point, that if we're creative and if we do something. That literally has response back and forth, you're going to have something that's absolutely beautiful. By the capacity of what they're architect, I'm not related to them and by the capacity of what most of the people here. Are concerned about traffic. Problems on that corner and all that. I also looked at the drawings and. It doesn't really represent communities, a lot of individual stuff, but man, we could use a dance hall. Or a representation or an outside little concert arena or something that brings us in instead of just. All the foreigners. Thank you.
Thank you. Alright, moving on now to written communications. Do we have any written communications tonight?
Never seen it, sir.
Alright, we're moving to committee reports. Any committee reports, Councilmember Sanchez?
Uh no committee reports, thank you.
Uh, any committee reports, Councilmember Horneck?
No, thank you.
Uh, any. Um, I I'm sorry, Councilman Horn. Did you want to give a read up from the green team?
Uh, I can.
I I just didn't know.
We don't have, we don't have an update really. I mean, we the green team met, um, we're going to meet again July tenth, I think. Um, we discussed the Thousand Trees Initiative, um, just kind of making plans and go forward with that. We have a, uh, we're trying to work on the five oh one C three and how we're going to take donations. Um, we've been working with city staff on that and um, we're going to go from there.
Um, attended the economic summit for San Luis Valley with uh, our city manager, Scott Wolf, who thank you for coming off of a vacation day and straight into that for a panel and discussion. And so, um, it was really nice to have all the tourism for the area and a discussion as well about what is kind of the lifeline for the valley. And then attended the visit San Luis Valley annual meeting that a long discussion that one of the highest growing tourism spaces that the valley is not capital or needs to capitalize on is single women travelers is becoming the highest growing market in the valley. So just as an FYI, single women travelers. Do you have a business out there looking for tourism? It's single women travelers. There you go. There's your Snapple fact for the day. All right, moving along, we're going to business items and now we have business items to begin. Thank you for all of you who have sat through this portion so far. Uh, tonight is item nine, consideration of arts and culture project application, the Buellton Fall Fest. And our staff contact back again for another round is our recreation park coordinator, Allison Fiery. And we do have to ask for Councilmember Sanchez at this point to recuse himself.
Thank you very much, yes.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of council. Uh, before I begin, I'd like to thank um, Councilmember Lewis for your kind words. I will um, relay those to the rest of our staff tomorrow. We really consider it an honor and a privilege when parents trust us with their babies. And um, and thank you for the opportunity to pour into their lives and invest in them this summer. Uh, that being said, if I'm to speak tonight, give me some grace because I have been at camp since seven thirty this morning. And words are hard. Uh, as uh, you'll remember, we brought a proposal to you last meeting, but we weren't able to vote because we didn't have a quorum. So I'm here again tonight um, to uh, speak on behalf of the committee in reference to the um, proposal that came in for the Buellton Fall Festival for twenty twenty five. Um, Mr. Nunez is here this evening to answer any questions that you might have um, of him. But as I mentioned to the last meeting, they request and Fuego Events requested twenty to twenty five thousand dollars from the committee um, to help cover the expenses of live music. And after some thoughtful discussion, we have decided to recommend an amount of eight thousand dollars to cover the two headlining bands for Saturday and Sunday nights. Um, in exchange for this, Enfuego has promised us that the arts and culture committee's logo would be included in all advertising for the event, that we would have a booth space to be able to um, meet with the public and hopefully garner some new um, you know, build some new relationships and garner some new applications moving into next year. And um, also that we will do a brief introduction before the bands play each night to um, really let the community know what we're doing and what we're looking for as far as the application process is concerned. Do you have any other questions for me before I go ahead and let him speak?
Any questions for staff listening? Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Hello. How's it going, everybody? First off, sorry about uh, missing the last meeting. I did not add it to my calendar, so I apologize for that. Uh, yes, I am Andres Nunez, a co-owner of Enfuego Events. We do many events here in the San Luis Valley. Uh, and proud to do the Buellton Fall Festival. So we once again uh, did apply for the grant through the uh, committee and we we truly appreciate the support they've done for the last two years. Um, we are beyond grateful for anything we can get in order to put on this uh, free admission event over three days. Um, so the eight thousand dollars is great, can be used for uh, several headliners throughout the weekend. And uh, if you guys have any questions as far as who those headliners would be, we already are working diligently and uh, putting together the entertainment for this year. Um, doing a little different than we normally have before. We were going to be grouping together uh, different styles of music on specific nights. Uh, so we think that'll encourage people to maybe stick around a little bit longer if they like that style of music as opposed to a country band and a classic rock, then a reggae band, then back to classic rock. We're trying to keep people down there longer and enjoy themselves better this year. I think it's going to be really fun.
Yeah, thank you very much. Any questions for the applicant at this time? Okay, well, thank you very much for being here.
Yep, thank you, guys.
Um, is there any public comment on this item? Okay, then we'll bring it back to staff for discussion and a possible motion.
Uh, Andres, thanks for coming, man. Um, I I I am fine with funding uh, more than the eight thousand. The only thing that I would suggest, and and I think I mentioned this last year, and I pretty sure Allison probably forwarded my message on, which was, I was really hoping to see um, local local musicians, local, I mean, students even, agree with making it a focus of the community, having our our people out there and and playing music. I I know that's not my place to tell you how to run an event. I'm sure you uh, know what you're doing. I'm really hoping to see that, especially with the arts and culture funding. Um, but that's all I want to say. It's on me.
But yeah. It's reform tonight. Let's see what happens. We'll we'll get out of here eventually.
Okay, so so yes, we we did hear that from Allison early on from last year. Um, and so we have kind of made it a focus to add more San Luis Valley bands, not necessarily a ton of bands that live here in Buellton, right? So um, reaching out just to people who used to play in the San Luis Valley many years ago, who still kind of have a presence. Uh, we talked to Bill A. and and so uh, they're going to be playing this year. They have some interest. Um, so we are in the we have, we have, you know, we reach out to locals, like younger people who have bands that are just starting. So any bands um, that are interested can just uh, go to our website or reach out to me. We love having, we're we're trying to do like two things at once, right? Yes, we want to make sure that the local bands are here, but at the same time, our goal also is to bring some out of town visitors to spend the night, spend some uh, some heads and beds, uh, add to that T O T, uh, which then helps the local community and it's kind of all the things that we do. So yes, we, you know, for instance, the Matt Caddies are coming back, right? Doesn't get any more local than that. We know everybody from here is going to be there on Saturday night to watch them. But we also want to make sure we get some other bands. So we we definitely are getting more local bands.
Yeah, I mean, like battle of bands for the high school or something, whatever I.
We had it for a little bit and it's like everyone aged out and no longer wanted to compete and they wanted to get paid more than.
I appreciate that under this, not my place to say, I just wanted to, that that's stuff that I would like to see.
We do listen, we do listen up for sure.
Thank you very much. Okay, we'll bring it back for further discussion or a possible motion.
Uh, I have one other question. Do we know what's left in arts and culture uh, budget for this?
So there were staff questions.
Yeah.
Uh, there's currently um, eighty three thousand three hundred eighty three dollars remaining.
Okay. And that is fiscal year or calendar?
Um, it is fiscal year.
And to confirm anything that's left over, rolled over, so. Oh, we have, come on back up. It's like whack a mole. I love this.
We actually did have a question about that um, as a committee because last year it rolled over, which is why we have so much love. I think we it, I want to say sixty thousand rolled over from last year. Um, we do have a lot of applications coming in for the July meeting, um, because we've gone to four meetings a year. Um, so I think we're looking at seven applications at our next meet or seven proposals at our next meeting. And in the budget that we saw, it only said a hundred thousand for this year. So we didn't know if that would continue to roll over from year to year or if next year we would not roll over because we were told that it rolled over because of COVID. Um, things stopped during COVID. So I just want to make sure heading into that July meeting.
When it was originally developed, the 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 um, thought of the council was to have it roll over from year to year if we didn't spend it all with the thought that over time, if the if the committee was a little more frugal, they could save up and have a larger maybe a maybe a festival type in an event with it eventually. Uh, or some larger headliners uh, at some point. Um, however, you know, the council then turned around a couple of years later and moved it from a fifty thousand dollar a year um, budget item to a hundred thousand dollar budget item. No, uh, no discussion that I am aware of negated that rollover provision. Uh, Chanel, are you aware of any, anything of that sort?
I also believe we even discussed that at our biannual budget meeting.
I thought so too.
Confirmed that we still wanted to do that.
And that will be into uh, later agenda with the rollover.
Yeah, we can't hear you here.
Oh, you can't hear me?
No, no, I'm sorry. We can, I just barely hear you coming over the speaker.
Oh, I don't know if you can hear me.
We we cannot hear you, but if you'd like to put it into the chat, maybe so we could see the answer.
Yeah, sound is coming through just very, very quiet.
Yeah, microphone maybe turned off or something. Um, okay, let's see. Um, it will be on the budget. It's on the budget item as a rollover.
Okay.
Okay, so then we can assume that the eighty three thousand less whatever is approved tonight will roll over into the budget for next year. So.
Yeah, thank you so much.
Of course. Thank you, Chanel.
So with that being said, did you have an amount?
No, no. I mean, and and like I said, I'm more inclined to 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 fund more uh, local community cultural things.
What?
Um, and I'm happy to stick with what.
Yeah, we had to fire Captain on who was coming. I know.
Okay.
And then we can do the phone.
I mean, I guess, are we asking about changing the the amount of approval? You gotcha. Okay. I mean, there's, there's a lot of applications coming for it. So I I do have the attitude of just like eight thousand, we just our third year of funding and we usually are mindful of trying to bring new projects into it. So I think we should take the planning or the arts and culture committee's uh, suggestion at this point and allow them to use the vision of what they're funding. It's we haven't seen what those applications are.
I'll second that.
Oh, am I making a motion? Okay, I'm making a motion to approve eight thousand dollars for the I'm sorry, I've lost my track. Uh, the Buellton Fall Fest Arts and Culture Committee application.
Second it.
Great.
Mayor Solva.
Hi.
Councilmember Horneck.
Hi.
And Vice Mayor Lewis.
Hi.
Splendid. Thank you very much for being here tonight. Please go get some sleep. Good luck at camp tomorrow. I'm okay. Um, next up, we will move to item number ten, resolution number twenty five dash one seven. A resolution of the city council, the city of Buellton, California, fixing the employer's contribution under the Public Employees Medical and Hospital Care Act at an equal amount for employees and and annuitants and revoking resolution number twenty two dash one zero. And our staff contact is Finance Director Chanel Zamora. And I believe at this point, we also will maintain Councilmember Sanchez's recusal at this point.
Uh, yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Chanel, you can try and speak now, see if it comes through the.
Yeah, I was gonna ask, can you hear me?
No, nothing's coming through.
Okay, I sense it in the chat.
Take a quick break. We'll take a a ten minute break. Well, we'll take a an a five minute, we'll take a break and we'll see. If you have to Chanel, we'll have you call in assistance. We'll see how long this takes. All right.
Eight hundred to twelve hundred.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
And then the second question I have is that these are all um, this funding that we're looking at. And if if we move forward with this, this comes from the general fund and no other funds, correct?
Comes from general fund, water fund and wastewater fund, depending on the employee allocation.
Proportional to the staff time assigned to those funds.
Correct.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Any other questions at this time? All right, any public comment on the item?
Oh, no, sir.
Okay, we'll bring it back to council for further discussion. Oh, Mr. Mayor, before motions made, um, there are just a couple of technical changes to recitals F and G.
Um, the dollar amounts uh, in numerals are correct in those two, but they weren't updated in the words. So any motion to approve would just to have to have technical amendments to say one thousand two hundred dollars in F and one thousand eight hundred dollars in G.
The technical amendments in F and G.
Thank you, sir.
All right, I'll bring it back for further discussion or possible motion.
I move to approve resolution number twenty five seventeen, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Beelton fixing the employer's contribution under the Public Employee Medical and Hospital Care Act. At an equal amount for employees and annuance and revoking resolution number twenty two dash ten with the edits to technical repairs to F and G.
Technical amendments.
Technical amendment.
Listen, yeah.
So I can.
Okay.
Okay, Vice Mayor Lewis.
Aye.
Councilmember Hornet.
Aye.
And Mayor Silva.
Aye.
Mayor Silva, I think Councilmember Sanchez can come back. And just for the record, if um, members of the public don't know, Councilmember Sanchez is an annuitant, which is why he recused from item ten and was a family member um, that uh, is employed um, uh, by the the enemy receiving funding in in item nine. That family member employment does not require recusal under the Political Reform Act, but to avoid even the appearance of conflict, um, Councilmember Sanchez did recuse. So just wanted to say this for the record and for any member of the public who might be watching. Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much and welcome back, Councilmember Sanchez.
Thank you.
You were missed. We will move on now to item number eleven, resolution number twenty five dash one eight, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Beelton, California, fixing a housing allowance for all regular full-time employees. And our staff contact will be again Finance Director Chanel Zamora.
Thank you, Mayor and Councilmembers. As presented on May twenty second during our budget study session, staff recommended the implementation of a housing allowance in the amount of seven hundred and fifty dollars uh, for all regular full-time employees. Uh, this would exclude the city manager as he has a separate contract with the city. This recommendation addressed one of the workforce challenges today we face, which is um, housing affordability. Rising rents and mortgage rates have significantly increased the financial strain strain on many employees. Um, the housing allowance recommendations results from the findings from the salary and compensation study the city uh, conducted earlier this year. While the results are not yet publicly released, some of the findings highlight housing affordability as a major concern affecting retention and recruitment. Employees consistently consistently cite high cost of living as a determinant to long-term employment and a barrier in attracting qualified candidates. The proposed allowance is aligned with the City of solving's monthly housing allowance, which serves as a reasonable benchmark for cities of similar size and cost. They provide, the City of Sullivan provides seven hundred and fifty dollars uh, for housing allowance for all employees. Other municipalities in high-cost regions are increasingly offering similar housing support as part of a broader retention strategy. This allowance would provide seven hundred and fifty dollars per month to all full-time regular employees, regardless of position or salary range. And as I mentioned before, the city manager is excluded from this benefit as this compensation is governed by a contract. Providing this housing allowance is a strategic investment in the workforce stability as it supports retention of trained and experienced staff and has recruitment recruitment competitiveness in a tight labor market. And it allows for better financial stability for employees contributing to job satisfaction and organizational loyalty. While this represents a new expenditure for the city, we physically manageable, we measured the financial impact and aim that preventing larger future costs associated with turnover turnover understaffing and recruiting delays. The fiscal impact based on the current nineteen regular full-time employees would be an increase of one hundred seventy one thousand dollars annually. This cost has been incorporated in to the proposed fiscal year twenty five, twenty six and fiscal year twenty six, twenty seven budget. Staff recommends that the City Council consider adopting resolution twenty five eighteen fixing a housing allowance for all regular full-time employees. And I am now open to answer any questions City Council may have.
Thank you very much, Chanel. We'll bring it back to council for questions. Councilmember Sanchez, any questions for staff at this time?
Uh, no, thank you.
Councilmember Hornet?
No, thank you.
Vice Mayor Lewis?
I have a question for Councilmember, or yes, Councilmember Murphy. If we choose to approve this this evening, as I know that this is not in line with what Councilmember Hornet would like to uh, explore further with housing and that type of thing. What does this look like with like fair labor practices if we approve it tonight while we explore our other options? And let's say that in a year after we're done looking at housing options, we come up with a different type of option such as a loan to buy a house or something, something else different, different for housing specifically for full-time employees. Would it be a violation of fair labor practice, given that this is a negotiated item, I assume? And we are proving it tonight to then take it away and supplement it with something else. Like, once it's given, it's, I mean, unless you go back to a negotiating table and say, okay, here's something else in lieu of that, like, does it take away our flexibility for later? Other option. I just want to know, like, on, like, because if this was the high school and you give it, there's not really a takeaway. You can add something different, but you can't take away.
So one benefit that uh, Beelton has in this regard is that you do not have a bargaining unit that you're dealing with. So some of those rules do not apply. Um, as you noted, the the two ways, there are two ways to reduce or change benefits. A reduction can come um, when financials require it. That wouldn't be the case here. The other way that a reduction can come is within equal or greater offset. And so even if you had an organized labor force with a bargaining unit, you would still have the ability to then negotiate out uh, a, as you said, a greater benefit or or a benefit that the bargaining unit would.
Prefer in some way.
If if they deemed it preferential, yes, you could at least offer it. Um, as you know, the only way to reduce it on on your own, um, to force the reduction would be with the financial uh, a financial shortfall. Without a um, a a unionized labor force, you have more flexibility. Still probably a bad practice, but there is more flexibility.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if I might chime in here as well. Um, another way to avoid that, believe in Mr. Murphy, correct me if I'm mistaken here. Um, if if the council were to come back and decide to offer something akin to what Councilmember Hornet was referring to earlier, the council could make it an either or proposition.
I appreciate the clarification. Cool.
Uh, one question I had is the funding for this will come from only the general fund?
Again. Or, oh, no, I'm sorry, Chanel, uh, this.
Yeah, you're you're right in line. Again, it would be the same. Um, it would be the general fund, water and wastewater, depending on the employee time allocation.
Okay, proportional to the time allocation. Secondly, solving offers seven hundred and fifty dollars a month currently, correct?
Correct.
What is their staff size compared to ours?
I do not know that on the top.
Thirty-eight employees or thirty-nine employees. Yeah.
Thirty-nine and some change, and we are at.
Twenty.
Twenty. Okay, thank you. Right. Uh, is there any public comment on this? Okay.
Uh, um, I'm sorry. So Chanel, just back piggybacking off of Mayor Silva's question. Does the increase in cost for water uh, and sewer employees, is that reflected in our rate study that went out?
Uh, there is not that specific scenario, but they have built in some assumptions on percentage increase in operation.
Is that something we should be concerned about?
Um. Scott.
I I I think the numbers we're talking about here, especially given the percentages we're referring to in the water and wastewater funds and the number of employees that uh, we're talking about is pretty, pretty minor in the grand scheme of things.
Yeah, it would probably be close to fifteen percent, fifteen percent of that one hundred and um, what was it? One hundred forty-four or one hundred seventy-one thousand.
Yeah, so so you're talking about less than thirty thousand dollars, uh, maybe twenty-five thousand dollars ish per uh, fund water and wastewater.
Okay.
Is there any public comment on this item?
No, sir.
Okay, we'll bring it back to staff or to council for the further discussion and a possible motion.
I have moved to approve resolution number twenty five eighteen, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Beelton, California fixing a housing allowance for all regular full-time employees. But I don't want that to preclude us from still exploring the other options that we were kind of talking about, but that's not part of my motion, obviously.
Council always has the option to explore uh, the prerogative to explore other options.
Is there a second?
I discussed this with staff um, earlier in the week um, including the idea of a sorry, my brain, uh, an employee uh, down payment assistance program. I think that um, having an option is great because um, not all employees will take advantage of the down payment assistance assistance program. And um, we're not even sure uh, when that project would roll out and also um, what kind of financial benefits benefit the city could receive in that uh, with high interest rates and high rates. So um, life, 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 excuse me. So I'm happy that. Um, so I'm happy that this is going forward. I'm happy that we're um providing for our employees and I want Beelton to uh to to be at the forefront of that and uh also remain fiscally prudent, which I think we are uh walking a fine line and doing. Uh, and I'm for this, so I will second uh Alicia's motion.
Great.
Okay. All right, Vice Mayor Lewis. Hi, Councilmember Hornick.
Hi.
Councilmember Sanchez.
Hi.
And Mayor Silva.
Hi.
Well, I wanna know what the L A F, L A F, yeah.
Local agency investment fund.
Oh, okay, it's a state-run fund.
I thought it was a word.
It's always an acronym. All right, thank you. Thank you for that. We will now move on to item twelve. Resolution number twenty five dash one nine, a resolution of the city council of the city of Beelton, California, making salary adjustments for certain regular full-time employees. And she's uh uh for her three-peat, it's staff count contact Finance Director Chanel Zamora.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor and council members. Um, so tonight's discussion is a follow-up from the May twenty-second budget meeting um where it was discussed that staff was recommending department head salary adjustments. And at that time, council um was in favor of including these salary adjustments as part of the budget. During that session, uh staff proposed a ten percent salary adjustment for all department heads. Um, that, again, this came in light of the preliminary findings of the city's salary and compensation study. Although the compensation study is not yet publicly released, early data clearly shows that department head salaries are over twenty percent below market rate for comparable positions at peer agencies. And one department head who holds a dual role, not directly comparable to a single position in other cities, is found to be approximately twelve percent below benchmark compensation. The, this proposed ten percent adjustment serves as a a um, I wanna say quick fix, but it's an interim fix to move salaries closer to parity ahead of a com- comprehensive review once the full study is released. It helps stabilize leadership, support retention and signal the city's commitment to fair compensation, especially in a competitive labor market for experienced municipal leaders. These adjustments are already included in the proposed uh fiscal year twenty five, twenty six and twenty six, twenty seven biannual budget. Has reviewed the financial impact to ensure that is, that it is sustainable and in line with long-term planning. The fiscal impact of the proposed increase is approximately eighty-one thousand two hundred sixty dollars, uh which includes uh salary and benefits. Of this total, approximately fifty-nine thousand dollars will be funded from the general fund, eleven thousand one hundred seventy-two from the wastewater fund and one eleven thousand one hundred seventy-two from the water fund. Uh, staff recommends that the formal adoption of the proposed department head salary adjustment make, excuse me, be made part of the fiscal year twenty five, twenty six and twenty seven, twenty-six, twenty-seven budget and adopt resolution twenty five nineteen, a revolution making salary adjustments for certain regular full-time employees. And I'm now open to answer any questions city council may have.
Thank you very much and we'll bring it back to council for questions of staff. Councilmember Sanchez, any questions?
Just a a comment, we did just gave a six hundred dollar raise for medical and the seven hundred fifty dollar raise for housing. And was that in the calculation when the of the percentage of the I think you run off a base and then the the addition of the ten percent? I was wondering what the six hundred and the seven hundred fifty dollars is as percentage-wise to the to the raise.
Oh, are you asking what if the gap was ten percent in consideration with those being adopted or not?
Right, well, the both of those are adopted, then the numbers change from what the original were, or no?
No, what we're, th- those numbers are, those numbers are benefits, they're not calculated to the base salary level. So what you're looking at here is just an increase on their existing base salary.
And the comparison is only to other base salaries, not including fringe benefits. Yeah.
Yeah, no, we're we're not piling on here.
Okay, that's what, that was my question. Thank you.
Councilmember Hornick, any questions? Vice Mayor Lewis, any questions?
Questions.
Okay, is there any public comment on this item? All right, we'll bring it back to council for further discussion and a possible motion.
Okay, I will move to approve resolution number twenty five nineteen, a resolution of the city council of the city of Beelton, California, making salary adjustments for certain regular full-time employees.
Second.
Okay, uh Vice Mayor Lewis. Hi. Councilmember San- uh Hornick.
Hi.
Councilmember Sanchez.
Hi.
And Mayor Silva.
Hi.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
Okay, now none of you can leave, just saying. Sorry, you're stuck.
We'll move on now to item number thirteen, resolution number twenty five dash twenty, a resolution of the city council of the city of Beelton, California, adopting the biannual fiscal year twenty five, twenty six and twenty six, twenty seven budget. And our staff contact, four times in a row, it's Finance Director Chanel Zamora.
Thank you, Mayor and members of the city council. Following the budget study session on May twenty-second, staff has incorporated city council recommendations along with additional internal review changes to finalize the biannual budget for fiscal years twenty five, twenty six and twenty six, twenty seven. The budget includes both the operating budget and the capital improvement budget for the city. Further additions, deletions and adjustments may still be made during this meeting and will be reflected on the final published version. Um, the, as mentioned in prior staff reports, uh the financial impact of the items before this um is already included in these projections. The final published budget is structured to meet the submission required requirements for the GFOA, distinguished budget presentation award. Uh, the final budget will include a budget user's guide, department descriptions, along with goals, objectives and performance measures, a summary of accomplishments. Um, and it will include fund descriptions, that uh full staffing levels, five-year fund, general fund forecast and appendices. Um, in the staff report, I summarize on table one, the overall budget. And the whole budget is balanced with sufficient revenue or reserves to support budget expenditures. And I'll just highlight that the main operating fund is the general fund. And for fiscal year twenty five, twenty six, the general fund is resulting in an operating surplus of sixty-six thousand thirty-eight dollars. Attachment two is a capital improvement bu- budget. These projects are supported by transfers from reserves with any operating surplus used first before drawing on reserve balances. St- staff has also listed all res- all reserve transfers and related expenditures to ensure transparency and fiscal accountability. Uh, some of the adjustments that were made from the prior meeting. Um, the the biggest one I'm highlighting is the acquisition of a recreation bus, which supports uh the expanded access to community programs. Um, this was mentioned at the meeting, so we went ahead and added it to the budget. Um, if council wishes to include it in the budget or not, um council can discuss it and if council wishes to purchase a bus, it will be brought back to council at a later date for discussion. Um, another change that was made is to the arts and culture budget. As mentioned earlier, prior year spent funds have been carried forward to support um upcoming projects in the new fiscal year. Additionally, staff has corrected a couple typos, typos identified during the final reconciliation phase to ensure accuracy in the fund reporting and category alignments. Um, so with that said, staff recommends the adoption of fiscal year twenty five, twenty six and twenty six, twenty seven. Um, as presented, uh staff recommends adopting resolution uh twenty five dash twenty. And I am available to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you very much. We'll bring it back to council. Questions at this time uh for staff? Councilmember Sanchez, any questions?
Yeah, we we uh, as I mentioned, we include the bus. We can say we'll include the bus for this budget and then if when it comes up, it'll, we won't have to discuss buying the bus later.
We will bring a contract back to the city council for approval, but it will be in the budget so that we can plan for that purchase.
So we'll be approving the budget with the.
Yes, but we would still bring the contract back to the council.
Thank you.
Councilmember Hornick, any questions?
Uh, yes, thank you. Uh Chanel, I'm sorry, you mentioned there was a, I believe what you said was a surplus uh operating revenue of sixty-six thousand odd dollars. Do you know what page that's on?
Um.
I was looking for it and I didn't see it.
Let me look. Well, it's on, it's on your staff report page. Let's see here.
Uh, page seventy-two.
Yeah, seventy.
Under fiscal impact.
Seventy-two?
Yes, page seventy-two.
Oh, that's where it's stated. That's where it's stated, yeah.
Yes.
Uh, you also have it on uh seventy-eight for revenue expenditure but fund type. Okay, so um that's for this fi- fiscal year coming and next month, we're expecting to have a net revenue of sixty-six odd thousand dollars based on all of the current adoption of expenditure and funding we just talked about and the bus.
That's already included in there.
Yes, okay, okay, great. Um, and elsewhere in this report, is that, is that calculated extrapolated for future years? Is like, do you project outward on this report?
Uh, not on this report. That's on the final published budget where you'll have the five-year general fund forecast.
Okay, but I don't see that on this and I'm not missing it?
No.
Is it not here? Okay, thank you. Okay, no further questions.
Vice Mayor Lewis, any questions?
No questions.
Um, the one question I had is just, it's mostly just to constantly make sure we've reiterated this that when we're planning for it, it is purposeful with the front-loading of our capital improvement projects. So we plan to expend a certain amount of money on our capital improvement projects with the understanding that not all of them will necessarily go through in the year, but we're budgeting for it so that if and when the time comes and we can actually fund it, we've realized that cost, but it could be, it's a a flow of the tide coming in. That's correct how the budget is reflected for capital improvement. Okay, thank you. Um, is there any, oh, sorry?
No, just that you're welcome.
Oh, thanks. Um, is there any public comment on this item?
No.
Okay, then we'll bring it back to council for further discussion and a possible motion.
Move to approve.
I second.
Great.
Councilmember Hornick.
Hi.
And Vice Mayor Lewis.
Hi.
Councilmember Sanchez.
Hi.
And Mayor Silva.
Hi. And that concludes our business items. We'll move now to city manager's report with city manager Scott Wolf.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of city council. I've got a few items for you this evening. Uh, first of all, as uh was mentioned earlier uh this evening, there is a uh town hall meeting planned uh for uh to discuss the proposed uh one hundred Hills School um application and information on that. This will be an informational only um type of a meeting. It's not anticipated to be a a back-and-forth discussion, just simply questions from the public answered by staff and the applicant uh to the project. That meeting will take place again on uh June twenty-third at six o'clock at the community room at the new library at two oh two Dairyland.
Be on the Zoom?
What's that?
Will that meeting be on?
It is not televised, no.
No, okay, thank.
Um, we also have a rate study meeting. Again, another um opportunity for the public to come and ask questions and get answers regarding the the proposed rate study. That will be held June twenty-fifth, that's a Wednesday, at six o'clock at Heart Middle School in the gymnasium. Um, on that note, on July tenth, for everyone's um uh awareness here, July tenth, the city council will hold a city council meeting. And at that time, there will be on the agenda a public hearing or the consideration of adoption of the proposed rate schedule that came out of the rate study. Uh, July tenth at that meeting is also the deadline for filing of protests. If uh you have any questions regarding your rate study, you can contact City Hall or visit the city's Beelton Engage page. We have a rate study page that's that's online. If not, now it will be by morning um with all the information that's on there regarding filing protests, et cetera. And um lastly, um I wanted to note that we have upcoming in early October, the annual League of California Cities Conference that council members typically attend. This year, that will conflict with our meeting of October ninth. And given that there are three council members who um uh expressed an interest in attending that, we're putting, you all know, is we will likely cancel the meeting on October ninth. So we will uh adjust agendas moving forward to ensure that we can accommodate that meeting cancellation. And if you have any questions for me, I'm happy to answer them.
Thank you very much. And then I know that we um need to move into closed session, so Councilmember Murphy, if you'd like to counsel, counsel. Mr. Murphy, could you read us into closed session, please?
That's a, that's a title I will never deserve. Uh, we're going to be going into closed session for two items. We're canceling item sixteen, the existing relegation, because we do not have an update. So we have item fourteen, public employee performance evaluation of the city manager under government code five four nine five seven in conference with real property negotiator regarding property at two oh two Dairyland Road. The other negotiating party is Hiroshi Partners LLC. Uh, full details are on the printed agenda. Thank you, sir.
With that, we'll move into closed session at eight sixteen.